All right, call to order. Welcome everyone to our regular Delray Oaks Planning Commission meeting. This is Wednesday, August 11th, 2021 promptly at 6:00 PM. I'll ask the city clerk to perform roll call, please.
Commissioner Burger. Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Ragsdale Cronin.
Here.
Commissioner Krieger.
Here.
Commissioner Jack Shaw.
I can't hear you Karen, I'm here.
And I am present as well, yes.
Chair Hallick, thank you.
All right, and at this time, Mr. Birch, if you'll post the colors and everyone rise and help me recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three on the agenda is our consent agenda. Item A to adopt our July 14th Planning Commission minutes. Any comments or questions? Any of the minutes that any of the commissioners would like to pull at this time?
I'll move that we accept them as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes are accepted unanimously. Item number four on the agenda, public comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public comment, the public may comment, excuse me, on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time that the matter is being considered by the commission. There will be a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken by the commission on matters brought up under this item and all comments will be referred to staff. So at this time, a public comment is open. Any members of the public care to provide the commission with any comments? I am seeing none at this time. And therefore, we shall move along. Item number five, reviewing the building activity report for July 21. Assuming everyone's had time to review our building activity report. Anything we need to pull, discuss, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All right, there you go. I think we accept the minutes as presented.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and the building activity report for July 2021 is accepted. Item number six on the agenda is old business, of which we have none. Moving along swiftly enough to item number seven, new business. Right from the outset, I will say that for proximity considerations, I need to recuse myself from item B, 7B, the application for Paloma Road. And also, I am seeing, in the name of absolute transparency, the representative and for the applicant concerning item 7A is Bill Mefford, I believe he's here this evening. Those of you that know and those of you that may not know, I am a general contractor and I utilize Bill Mefford's services in the past, currently on a project right here in our good city, and I certainly will in the future. And we conduct business transactions and therefore I think a recusal on that item is also appropriate. So at this time, I will shut off my video and my audio, I will pass the virtual gavel to Vice Chairman Hayworth, and I will wait in the gallery for item 7C, at which time I will resume the chair.
Well, this is a surprise to me, and I have to recuse myself from this one as well because of proximity.
Alex, I think you might not have a quorum for this one.
Well, this is new territory for me then. That would leave us with five of seven, am I right? Any other commissioners needing to recuse themselves?
Krieger, Commissioner Hayworth, Commissioner Burger, but he's not here, and then yourself. Oh, so we would have three.
In which case, as you mentioned, we will not have a quorum. And again, this is unfamiliar territory, so I will refer to staff as to how to, and legal counsel as to how to appropriately proceed. City Attorney Lorca or City Manager Curtin, if you would, please.
You could, Mr. Chair, you could put it over to the next Planning Commission meeting, or we could set a special meeting if this, you wanted to get this application processed and ensure that we would have enough, enough planning commissioners seated.
In the case that Mr. Commissioner Burger were present, we would have four of seven.
Right.
Therefore, okay.
Commissioner Burger would have to step down from this item.
He would.
Yes.
Well, we're such a close-knit little community.
Just a quick, quick comment, if Krieger, Burger, and Hayworth are have to step down, and Mr. Hallick steps down, that's four, we have seven, that only leaves three, or we eight?
No, we're seven.
We're seven, so you got four out, you're only gonna have three no matter what, even if Mr. Burger comes in.
Three regardless, let's correct, Commissioner Ragsdale Cronin, three regardless, so quite a little conundrum.
Yes.
So, is it absolutely necessary that the chairman stand down, or is this just an elective thing on his part because he feel he can't be objective?
I certainly can be, but just for any ethical question, I had opted to, but in this case, perhaps I stay aboard and steer this item as well.
Alex, how do you feel about that? Is that?
That's up to Chair Hallick to make, I don't, I don't hear any, you know, proximity or any sort of other financial interest under the Political Reform Act. It sounds to me like Chairman Hallick is just doing it out of an abundance of caution, perhaps in the context of more of a common law conflict or a bias, but if Commissioner Hallick felt that he could hear this matter objectively and vote accordingly, then, then he could proceed. Again, it's for the chairman to make that determination, but if that was the case, he could proceed.
Butting in here, having been past chair, we ran into this before and we sort of drew straws because it had to go through.
Which is another way to do it, so if we had, if Chairman Hallick decided to recuse himself, we need four and, and, you know, under the doctrine of sort of legally required participation, those that were conflicted would draw straws at random or pick a number or something like that, as long as it was objective and sit as the fourth member to hear the matter.
Can we draw straws?
Thank you for your guidance on this matter, Mr. City Attorney. I will resume the chair and see this item through. Now then, item 7A, new business, the applicant's name or representative is Bill Mefford, representing Mrs. Neville, Betty Neville, at 1048 Portola. The project is described as, the applicant is requesting approval to add a 122 square foot addition to the single family dwelling. All colors and materials to match existing. Staff recommends that we analyze provided material, make appropriate findings, impose conditions as appropriate, and give directions to staff. At this time, if we could hear from the owner or representative thereof, please.
Hi, I'm Bill Mefford, I'm the architect for Betty Neville. It's a pretty simple project. She wants to add a bathroom, basically, she has a one bathroom house currently, and so we're pushing the one bedroom forward and sliding a bathroom closet area in, kind of on the inside, but also pushing the bathroom out to the side by five feet. Everything's going to, it will all match the existing materials and colors, and we're with, you know, we aren't, aren't outside of the setbacks for the property, we are within them, and, you know, it's, the height is one story, it's not anything that's, that's gonna jump out at you. So anyway, any questions?
No, none for me, and thank you, Mr. Mefford. I'll go first and very quickly, as I thought I was going to need to recuse myself, I looked at this very briefly and practically not at all, but luckily it's a very straightforward project. As Mr. Mefford indicated, it's within all building requirements, as per the plans that I'm viewing, materials to match existing, so building requirements are compliant, in my view, and lot coverage is within requirement, setbacks as well, and I, you know, reason to not move forward with the project. So Commissioner Ragsdale Cronin.
I looked it over pretty, pretty carefully, I see nothing wrong, other than I'm curious to where the water's gonna come from for the bathroom, but that's not our jurisdiction, I don't believe, so I see no issues with it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Commissioner Wood and Denise and I looked at it, and we had a question, there was a, an addition done on Via Verdi, exactly the same thing, which we approved, and they came back the following month to ask to enclose the whole thing from the bedroom to the bathroom. They didn't want to do it originally because they had to move the power, main power, and I think they mentioned something about $800. And so my question is, with, why not enclose the whole thing? I agree, it's an extra hundred, you know, a thousand bucks, but it sure would make it a lot simpler, and it's been done before, identical, and so, just a question.
So just to clarify, George was saying, just to bump out, instead of that little pocket that you're pushing out for the bathroom, why not push out the whole wall? But that's just a, you know, just your preference there.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Right, all excellent points. Anything else, Commissioner Wood?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioner Krieger has stepped down, and that is our review on this project. All right. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I might, just for the, for the record, I apologize for interrupting, just go out, go out to the public, even if no one's here, just for the record.
Thank you, City Attorney Lorca caught me a moment before I did myself. We should go out to public comment, any neighbors have any comments relative to the project? And seeing none, we will then proceed again to, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 7B.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
And city clerk will perform roll call for the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correction, I said 7B, I meant 7A.
I was gonna mention that.
Got ahead of myself.
We have a second, and the city clerk will perform a roll call.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Yes.
Ragsdale Cronin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Chairman Hallick.
Yes. And therefore, item 7A, which is approved unanimously by those of us present, by majority of the Planning Commission, which is, I've lost my place for a moment, please. So, relative to Architectural Review 21-06, for the record, is unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. Mr. Mafford, your homeowner can proceed at will, bear in mind that there is a 20-day appeals period before the approval is absolutely finalized, but otherwise, you are good to go. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
All right. So, back to, and I hope we don't go through the same situation. Item 7B, I certainly do have to recuse myself for proximity reasons, as so far as I see it, what's that going to do to attendance here tonight? Am I the, I believe I'm the only one?
Jeremy?
Yes.
Commissioner, or Chairman Hallick, I have Commissioner Jack Shaw stepping down from this item, and you're stepping down from 7C. According to the radius search that we do.
Okay, so I'm still good on the Paloma one, but not the Rosita.
So I am signing off.
Okay, let me get back here to where I need to be. So, item 7B, the applicant, Desi Petas, is, the description of the project is requesting approval to enclose the existing carport by building walls and adding a garage door. Requesting approval for variance since the existing carport was originally built in the city easement, all colors and materials to match existing. And again, we will analyze the provided materials, make our appropriate findings, and impose conditions as appropriate, and give directions to staff. This time I'll invite the applicant to present their application. The applicant or representative thereof. Is there a Pat Pong Suon Supa or Desi Petas with us this evening?
Hi, Pat or Pat Pong Suon Supa?
Sir, please go, please proceed.
Okay, yeah, so we just wanted to enclose a pre-existing carport by adding two walls and a garage door. Everything else will be matched to the house, I believe, stucco and paint. Yeah, that's basically our plan there.
Great. So, planning commissioners, questions or comments? You're muted, Commissioner Krieger.
Okay, it's hit it again, and I'm gonna stay on, thanks. Okay, yeah, I don't, I mean, it's, it's been there for a while, it's already in to the easement, and so we're not going any further into it, there's still room for a sidewalk, I think garage would look nicer and be more secure than in the, the carport. Kind of curious how we were able to build it without the garage, in the first place, that was probably done a while back in Grandfather's End, but I didn't have any, any particular questions, it looks like it would be fairly straightforward, and I think it would probably improve the way the, that end of the street looks by putting a garage up instead of just the carport. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Krieger, and Commissioner Wood.
Oh, I don't see any problem with it at all, and I like the touch of the copper gutters, that'll be nice.
Thank you. Moving on to Commissioner Ragsdale Cronin.
I just, one quick question, I mean, I don't see a problem with the, with the project, it'll make the place look better. What is the existing roof on the existing carport, and is that gonna be changed? It doesn't, I can't tell what it is.
Yeah, there, it's, it's, it's like tar, hot mop, I think, it's gonna be, it's gonna be changed to a TPO because of the slope.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I have, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ragsdale Cronin, Commissioner Hayworth, Vice Chair Hayworth.
Thank you, have you spoke with your neighbors, or have any of the neighbors expressed any thoughts on the project?
Most of my neighbors have, they're looking forward to it being enclosed, so I haven't had any negative feedback from anyone around me, so.
And I asked Karen about this too, and I guess that carport was approved when the house was originally built, so it's been there a while. And Alex, do you see anything legally that we should look out for with it being in the setback or inside the easement?
No, the, the, the structure is existing, so if it's, you know, within, in the setback now, it's legal non-conforming, the only thing I would recommend is, if the commission was so inclined to approve this, is to make part of the motion, adopt the findings made in the application for the variance, that way it's included in the record.
That's it for me.
And I concur that I see no substantive issues with this, in fact, it's a positive improvement. So we will entertain a motion consistent with and to include the recommendations by the city attorney.
I move it.
Mr. Chair, if we would just note, going to the public for a.
We noted. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Any members of the community have any comments relative to this project proposed? Seeing none, we can proceed, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, I move, we accept ARC 21-07 and variance 21-01 with the notes as, for the city attorney.
A second.
And city clerk will perform roll call for the vote.
Vice Chair Hayworth?
Yes.
Chair Hallick?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood? I saw your lips move.
Yes.
Commissioner Ragsdale Cronin?
All right, and so the project application is approved unanimously concerning Architectural Review 21-07 to include the variance number 21-01, approved unanimously by attendance. Mrs. Petas, you, again, you have the, you are approved and have the right to proceed at will, however, be aware that there is a 20-day appeals period, any member of the public may appeal the project, so until that point, you are on your own recognizance, but you can move forward freely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along, item 7C, which, back to my position on this project, I will need to recuse myself for proximity reasons, I will cancel my video and audio, pass the virtual gavel to Vice Chairman Hayworth, and I'll see you on the other side in a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Okay, the applicant's name, well, I start, this is, we're hearing ARC 21-08. 1931 Rosita Avenue, Rosita Road, sorry. They want to request approval to add 288 square foot garage and a 59 square foot storage room adjoining the new garage and existing kitchen. The existing garage was previously converted into a living space, all colors and materials to match existing. Do we have a representative of the project for the project?
Yes, my name is Eddie Hurt, I was the architect that prepared the drawings and designed this project for the Breelands, and I'm here to answer any questions there may be. We positioned the garage such that we could make the minimum required 288 square foot garage fit on the property and stay in back of the property lines, it does come very close at the front of, the corner to the side yard property setback, and so we had a survey done that confirmed that what you see on the site plan drawing is, can be built and stay within the setbacks. I don't know if there's, the, the garage that was converted was done by a previous owner, not the current owners, not the Breelands, but for them to proceed with anything they want to do, they want to correct this non-conformity, so they wanted to add a 288 square foot garage to replace the 288 square foot garage that had been converted to a family room sometime in the past. The construction drawings will document what was done when the garage, original garage was converted, and it will also, of course, obviously, show the construction details for the new addition as well. So that's the gist of the project, everything is going to match in terms of roof shape, exterior materials, paint colors, windows, doors, things of that nature.
Thank you, so I guess we'll go to the commission now, Commissioner Krieger.
All right, it's set off that time, great, thank you. All right, well, you answered my, my first question about how they got by without a garage in the first place, so I guess, original, previous owner. The trees along the side, are the trees gonna stay there, or will the trees be gone?
No tree is involved, no tree removal is involved.
Okay, are you, are you, I couldn't tell, maybe I missed it from, is there gonna be drainage on the side there between, because it's gonna be getting pretty close up to the retaining wall, is there gonna be drainage installed along there to, to help with that?
Once we get to the construction drawing phase, I'll be showing a drainage plant that will contain all the site water on the site, will probably empty the downspouts into a dry well that will be contained on the property, so there'll be no runoff onto any adjoining properties.
Okay, because I did, unfortunately, neither the Breelands went home or their neighbors when I went by, so I wasn't able to, just able to poke around and see what I, what I could see without talking to them, but the retaining wall certainly is, does look like it's, it needs repair, is, who's, do you know who is responsible, that the Breelands, or is it the neighbor that's responsible for the retaining wall?
I wouldn't know, I don't know where that retaining wall sits in relation to the property line, who built it. Structurally, we will not be adding any surcharge, structural surcharge to soils that that retaining wall will be, is currently holding. But to tell you the truth, I didn't look very closely at it because I was just concentrating on the new construction and did not inspect the condition of that retaining wall, so I, I guess I can't answer that question.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand exactly all the implications of that going in there, I mean, if they're having trouble now, if you move it closer, it seems like it might be more of a problem for the neighbors, just, just trying to understand, you know, what's gonna happen. The structures in the, in the side and in the backyard, I assume, gonna stay, or are they gonna remove those, you know?
But I'm sorry, I don't know what structure you're referring to.
There's a structure, so on the side, there's a structure there that's open, they put like lawn mowers and yard equipment in it, and then there's like, looks like a detached, fairly sizable standalone structure in the backyard, I didn't go in the backyard, but I could see it over the fence, I'm just curious, if all that's planning on staying as well, as far as you know?
Nothing's being removed, and as far as I know, there's nothing like that attached to the house itself, there is a shed-like structure, as you pointed out, for storage of bicycles and lawn care materials, things of that nature, but those are far back from the property, all of our construction is forward of that, towards the front of the house.
Right, I know, it's definitely detached in the back, it's not, it's not connected, I'm just curious. Okay, that's all I got for right now, thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Mr. Ragsdale Cronin? Yeah, just a couple of things, you know, we, we do have a letter from one of the neighbors concerned about drainage, that they apparently suffer some drainage from the property now, floods their driveway. From the pictures, looks fairly substantial. So, um, that needs to definitely be addressed, that we can't have water from the neighbors going into the neighbors. That's not appropriate. Um, and then there are some pictures of the retaining wall. Um, I would like to certainly make sure that somebody evaluates it to make sure that it is safe. Um, especially if you're gonna, where is the dry well gonna be in re- relationship to the retaining wall?
I don't know yet where it would be located, but it will collect all, uh, rain, the roof water. And the water that will be on our driveway will be directed towards the street, not the adjoining property. Water that falls on the roof and drains out through the townhouse will be collected in a dry well that'll be located on our property. I have not looked at, I, I've only was aware of this letter from the, a neighbor about half an hour ago.
Okay, no, I didn't mean to catch you off guard. Um, what I, my concern would be simply is if you put the dry well anywhere near that retaining wall, you're gonna add water to the ground, which is gonna change the cut, it's gonna change the loading on that wall. If you drip, put a dry well between the house and that wall, which I don't think you would, it's a pretty small space. But just keep that in mind as you go forward. Um, other than that, I think that covers my questions. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, oh, thanks for, um, answering some of the questions about the drainage issues. And then, um, I was over there with the tape measure, it looked like, actually, the way it was staked, it's more like five and a half feet from the edge of the retaining wall, and I'm assuming that's the edge of the property line. So it might actually be a little farther than you think. At least, that's the way it was staked out. It wasn't at six and a half feet, it was more like five and a half.
Uh, the retaining wall is not necessarily in the occasion of the property line?
No, but I think, um, uh, had a conversation with the neighbor, and I guess when it was surveyed previously, the retaining wall was redone during his, his time, and the retaining wall was on the property line, according to his recollection.
Um, but I, I have nothing to answer to that. Uh, we just, we, the Breelands hired, uh, the surveyor to do, um, a, a line survey to, in relation to corroborate that our garage does not impinge into the side yard setback, and that was all. He did not locate anything else except building outline and the property lines.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you, and Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Well, um, in the surf, on the surface, this looks like a pretty straightforward, uh, addition, with the exception of what Denise said, uh, we went over there and measured. And it looks really close. The drawings are, you know, should we accept them as presented? They're not, there's no official, uh, survey stamp on here, so I'm just taking it for granted that this is correct. So, um, that would be my first concern, that we see an official, uh, survey map, uh, with an official survey stamp on it. And as far as the retaining wall, after many years of being on the commission, I'm under the understanding that retaining walls that hold up the property, whoever's property it's holding up, it's their responsibility to maintain that wall. So given that note, uh, it's a pretty substantial wall, and I would hate to have somebody have to tear that down and redo it. Because there's, uh, on the inside, we, like Denise said, we talked to the neighbor. And it's bowed out on one, inside the fence about two inches, which, uh, for a retaining wall is actually quite a bit. Uh, so I would like to have, uh, at least an engineer look at it and give us his official opinion on whether that could be, uh, reinforced or, you know, at worst case, taken down and, and redone. But I would like to, uh, see a, a certified engineer take a look at that retaining wall and an architect's official stamped drawing, because it is pretty close. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, George. Um, Karen, I have a question. Um, so, um, before anything happens, would the inspector inspect things like the retaining wall? Sorry, my buddy's in the way here.
You know, the building official's gonna.
Can't hear you, Karen.
Can you hear me now?
I can't, I can't hear you.
Okay.
I can.
You can hear?
Uh huh.
Yeah, yeah, I got her.
Okay. The building official will look at the plans and do the plan check and the building inspections per the scope of work?
Okay, I'm sorry, um, I had my buddy turn off my sound here, so I, that's why I didn't hear you.
Okay.
Uh, so if you can, can you say it again?
Yes, the building official's gonna, to do the plan check and all the building inspections as per the scope of work and the plans that, that are approved pending your approval tonight.
So it won't include that retaining wall? Likely not.
Have any feedback?
Did, could you hear me?
Yeah, I, I heard you.
Okay, yeah, yeah, likely, uh, no, they won't be inspecting the, the retaining wall.
Okay, um, and George, I think there is a drawing that has the, um, the, um, survey.
Well, it's, I, I don't see an official survey stamp at all on it, or am I missing something? I see up at the top, the, uh, Mr. Hunt's, uh, stamp, but in the past, you know, we've had drawings and they've actually put a, an official, uh, aha.
Yeah, it's got Frank's stamp on it.
I'm looking.
In your packet, it's the second page after the application.
I'm looking at the, the handout drawing, so, okay. I guess I will accept that then.
Hey, Mr. Hurt, I, I know you, um, got the inform, the letter from the neighbor about the water runoff late. Do you feel as though, um, this water mitigation plan that you have will address that?
We certainly don't want to create a problem, and if there is a problem now, we'll try to address it. Uh, and, uh, I, I wish the, we had been made aware of this before. Evidently, it's been an ongoing problem they had with the previous owners, but the Breelands were not aware of this, and neither was I. Uh, we certainly would, uh, look at it. We don't, if that wall is theirs, the Breelands, uh, we, uh, will take care of it. And, uh, so the answer, the short answer is, we're not gonna let the neighbors suffer from anything we do.
Okay, but, um, anything you do, but anything that's existing that doesn't get addressed will still exist.
There it is.
I, I don't know. I guess the best way is to have a civil engineer take a look at the situation and advise us.
Okay, um, I guess we'll go out to public comment now. Uh, I don't see any public, uh, anybody has anything to say that's maybe listening on page two that I don't have. Okay, seeing nobody. Do we have any other comments from commissioners?
Yeah, uh, Vice Chair?
Mike, Gary.
Yeah, I was, okay, so, well, I was having the kind of the same concern, I, I saw, I'm assuming where the, um, Frank certified, um, what's on his, his sheet matches with the other ones, so we'll kinda, okay, that's certified, that's good. But I gotta tell you, the, the drainage plan and the retaining wall evaluation, I'd just feel a lot better if, in no slight to the Breelands, but I would feel better personally if that was taken care of before we, we move forward. In other words, we, we had a engineer come out, evaluate the wall, look at the drainage plan, what's the impact on the retaining wall, and all that's like iron clad before we, we approved it. I mean, that just, I would feel better, I think, approving it if, if, if those steps were, uh, were taken beforehand, instead of, you know, having to, uh, uh, rely on the, you know, good intentions, which I, I, I don't doubt their good intentions, but I just think that we're better served if we just put that stuff up front and, and make it a requirement. That's my opinion.
Commissioner Ragsdale Cronin, anything more? Uh, not really. I agree with, uh, Commissioner Krieger that we should, uh, um, get a engineer's evaluation of that wall and get a drainage plan together. To make sure that any new drainage off this property and old drainage is handled. One of the pictures looks like it might be the V ditch on the street, which may or may not fall under the city's purview, so we probably need to dig into that maybe a bit more. Um, but I, I agree with Commissioner, uh, Krieger that, uh, engineering and, and site drainage plan is definitely needed. Thank you.
I mean, I suggest that this be, uh, that, that may a condition be made that this be done as part of the construction drawings, which is where this kind of work is usually done. This is a designer proof, uh, design application. Uh, and we're trying to resolve and get, you know, all of our designer approvals so that we can proceed to the construction drawing stage, where engineers will be involved, including drainage. Uh, and so, well, I would suggest that you make maybe a c- condition of the approval that the construction drawings, um, address the drainage issue in some form. I don't know what that would be. The engineer would come up with that. That way we could proceed, otherwise we're gonna be delayed quite a ways, uh, from trying to get this garage built. We could make it done at the same time as the construction drawings, I guess is what I'm getting at, as long as we know that we have designer approval for the concept of to proceed. Right now, it looks like it, we're not gonna get that unless we hire the engineer first. That, that's my suggestion, is make it part of the construction drawing phase.
Okay, Ragsdale Cronin? Yeah, um, I guess a question that I would have is, we approve this thing, and it gets, it gets all designed, and all of a sudden, there's a major problem. You've got an approved building permit, and you can't build it because the wall's not intact. And repairing that wall is, as large as it looks, is not gonna be a, a small, cheap item if it needs repair. Um, can we approve the design without issuing a permit, Chair, Vice Chair? So he can go forward with his drawings, but they won't get a building permit to build the thing until we see the drainage plan and the engineer's valuation of the wall? Is that something we can do? I don't know. I don't know either. That's something that either the city attorney or, um, the city manager may have some input there.
That would normally be the next phase anyway. That's what I'm trying to say. Uh, that you could make it a condition so that when it comes up for a plan check by the building department, they'll know that an engineer has looked at it. Right now, we're, I'm just, I don't even know. I'd have to consult an engineer myself and to find out what the problem is and how they're gonna fix it. Um, but that normally follows in the construction drawing phase. That's the only, the only thing I can think of. Um, we can't proceed for building permit until we get construction drawings. Those drainage drawings, we'd be part of that. So I don't, I, I'm just suggesting that we just, if the design is fine, we get our designer approval so that we can proceed with confidence doing the construction drawings. Those can be re- uh, reviewed by the building department for adequacy for all the building department needs, including drainage.
Right, and the, what, what Mr. Hurt's describing there is what I'm accustomed to also, is that we get the design review at the planning commission, and then we can handle, uh, you can condition the permit so that when he comes to apply for the uh, building permits and, and go through plan check, then we can check all of the drainage and the engineering at that point.
Um, Commissioner Woods, and then we'll get to you, George.
Okay.
Okay, I think that was solved.
George?
Okay, um, just going back to the, um, to the, uh, distance between the property and the wall, I noticed here with the drawing, that it says seven and a half feet. Denise and I looked at it, and, uh, from the stake of the corner to the outside of the wall was five and a half feet, which means that the retaining wall is well within their property, hence their responsibility. Uh, so, I'm not gonna make a motion, but in the motion, whoever makes one, uh, I would like to approve as submitted with the condition that an, uh, engineer look at the wall and the drainage. And that the building inspector follow up on that uh, engineer's drawing, that it's satisfactory, and if not, red tags the, red tags the, uh, construction. I don't know if that sounds appropriate.
I think you just made a motion.
Pardon?
I think you just made a motion.
Well, I didn't want to, but, uh, if that's the case, I will make the motion that we approve Architect's Review uh, twenty-one dash oh eight with the condition that a structural engineer look at that wall and come up with repairs or rebuild as needed. And the drainage, uh, situation to be inspected or looked over by the city, um,
Inspector.
Inspector, thank you.
Okay, have, have a motion, do I have a second? A second. On, uh, Karen, I guess all you can, uh, well, let's, uh, let's talk about this.
Public comment.
Yes, yeah, okay, we'll go to public co, well, first of all, um, so, is that motion, does that motion sound like it will work for Karen and, uh, city manager? I don't, we don't have Alex. Did you do it, was that clear enough?
It is clear.
Okay, all right, um, now out to public comment. Seeing nobody. Karen, roll call?
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Ragsdale Cronin?
Yes.
Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hayworth?
Yes. Okay, I guess Jeremy can come back. Oh, and, uh, Mr. Hurt, uh, there's a twenty-day appeal period, so, uh, doesn't sound like you're gonna probably start right away, but, uh, yeah, if you do, it'll set your own, uh, your own risk.
Understood.
Welcome back, Jeremy.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Hayworth. Uh, so I've been looking, uh, waiting for an opportunity, uh, throughout tonight's agenda to, um, interject this item, uh, sub item, whichever, and I think that, uh, just preceding, uh, our comments and announcements by planning commissioners, I'd like to, uh, offer the opportunity to our, uh, new city manager, uh, city manager Gerton to, uh, introduce himself formally to the, uh, planning commission. That's your pleasure, sir.
All right, thank you, Chair. Uh, it's a pleasure to meet all of you. I'm looking forward to someday meeting all of you in person. Uh, that would be nice, actually, see what everybody looks like up close and get to know you all and hear, hear from you on, uh, where you'd like to see the city go. Um, as I mentioned at the start of the meeting when we were all chatting, uh, I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of, of the Monterey Peninsula, so I'm very familiar with all of the peninsula cities and also Del, Delray Oaks. And, uh, I'm looking forward to working with you and the council and the community on taking your very lovely city forward. And you all know where City Hall is, so you can find me anytime you wanna talk to me. And if you can't find me, Karen can always find me.
Nice.
Thank you very much, City Manager Gerton. Uh, and now, uh, item number eight, uh, announcements, comments by the planning commissioners. I'd like to follow, uh, City Manager Gerton's lead there and, um, welcome him aboard accordingly. Uh, yes, I, um, actually requested an individual briefing with and had the opportunity to meet with, uh, City Manager Gerton, uh, this afternoon, earlier today, and, um, wow, what a meeting. It was, uh, my experience was, uh, just as the gentleman has described, you know, I found a very welcoming, open door policy and, um, it was just a really great, uh, brief correspondence. Um, I extended to him on behalf of, personally, and on behalf of the planning commission, our, uh, recognition and our respect to, uh, his key leadership role and, uh, as our executive officer of the city, and assured him, uh, that, uh, while we rely greatly uh, on his guidance and have the utmost confidence in it, that, uh, moving forward, uh, the planning commission, uh, will support his diligent efforts, uh, at every turn. And I think it's just gonna be a, a, a great working relationship and welcome again, sir.
Thank you.
We had, uh, just to report out, uh, some of the context of our meeting. Uh, I discussed a few of the items that are, um, on the near horizon here. We discussed, uh, the planning commission's role in, uh, well, first off, uh, as a continuation, uh, you may all recall, uh, when I first assumed the chair earlier this year, I was in discussions with, um, Acting City Manager Hoyn, wherein we were going to develop a, an efficient system, a, uh, curriculum for, um, really a fourfold curriculum. a curriculum for, really a fourfold curriculum specifically for the planning commission. One would be an ethical refresher where we would invite the city attorney to join us again. Another component would be just procedural, orders of operations sort of review. There would also be discussions for procuring greater resources and maintaining some of the very same that we've utilized for further education, greater effectiveness for the planning commission. And another component that is somewhat tied in is just basically our job description, our scope of power, our sphere of influence as the planning commission, and our role in our city government in, in the, the order of things. So I expressed that to the city manager. He agreed that, that implementation of some sort of a program would be beneficial. No action was taken, of course, no definitive decisions, but just to announce again, similar to my work with Acting City Manager Hoyn, we'll be moving forward with, with measures along those lines, and more will be revealed as that unfolds. Also, I discussed, well, just kind of in tandem with some of the training that I just suggested, some items that are some, some issues that, that we could maybe perfect a bit better. Conduct, decorum, procedural, rules of order during meetings, address amongst each other and to the public, so on and so forth, to really represent in the best way possible to ourselves and to the public that we serve, you know, a, a highest level of professionalism and orderly effectiveness that we can. Recently, the general plan has been, there's been a great push, as we all know. We have a 24-year-old general plan that is in dire need of updating, some of which may be steadfast and very valid current day, but there's certainly some areas that need to be taken, areas that need to be looked at closer, some overlay, some addendum, updating and adjustments to the general plan. And I'd like to thank the city manager and the majority of the city council for recognizing the planning commission's role in that process. In fact, under the current general plan, which we still are guiding documents, there within, it is indicated that we, the planning commission, are responsible for reviewing annually the general plan, making findings, and and referring them to city council for approval and updates, addendum, overlay, et cetera. In my time, which is nine, three years plus now, that has not been addressed. There's been many other items on our agendas. I believe it was addressed specifically the housing elements just prior to my coming on to the planning commission. We, of course, undertook the housing, housing element draft, that process with the assistance of Denise Duffy and Associates and staff, but otherwise, we haven't really focused on that. And so I expressed a need and an acknowledgement of our responsibility in that role moving forward, and we're going to start chipping away at that. Whether that be one of seven elements at a time or a couple each month, however that might proceed, we'll consult our city manager, Denise Duffy and Associates, or whoever our outside contractors are to help guide us through that, and planning commission will be there to fulfill our responsibilities there. So we'll move forward there accordingly. So that was about the context of our meeting, just a great introductory meeting with our new city manager. Again, I'm really looking forward to, he shares the same vision in usually moving our city forward. So to finish, I will announce that those in attendance of the last city council meeting, where you may have heard the scuttle around town, we have indeed been tasked with the drafting of a new flag policy, of which our city has none at this time. And so, again, I'd like to thank the majority of the city council for their recognition in our role. I see it as most steps in this procedure, in our governmental procedures, as another level for any item potentially to be acted on, to be presented in open meetings, therefore offering public outreach and public opinion. And typically, the planning commission might not be involved in something as specific as a flag policy. However, even outside of our job description, I see that our, our reach is, can be a bit more broad, broad than just described in black and white, and so I see it fitting responsibility and a task for us for the reasons mentioned, and particularly because there is an architectural component to it. We will be responsible for potentially placement of flag poles, banners and flags that adorn them, which will be on the facade of a public building and lend an architectural and aesthetic feature. And so I have already begun to rough draft said documents. I'll get something together very concisely, very simple yet detailed and thorough. It'll be presented to staff through the city manager. It'll be vetted through. Our city attorney will bring that back as soon as possible. I will bring that back to the, it'll be presented to us at the city council. I completely expect this to just be seen as a template, if you will, a rough draft, open to suggestions for addendum, edits, strikes, additions, what have you. But we'll have an opportunity, again, with, with the public president in open meeting to, to really review that document, and we should be able to produce that fairly quickly and send it upstream to the city council for approval in a, in a reasonable amount of time. That is about all I have to report out on. I don't think I forgot anything, and thanks again to our city manager, Mr. Gerton, and we'll move on to Vice Chairman Hayward.
Don't have anything. Hope everybody's having a good summer.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chairman Hayward. Commissioner Krieger?
Commissioner Hayward, the summer ended. I've been, came back to school two weeks, summer's over. Oh, too short. Okay, get so quickly, look forward, Mr. Gerton, I'll be meeting with you, I believe. We sit up today on the second with Alex, and we'll be looking at the sign file, looking at the, his changes for the sign ordinance. So hopefully, now that Alex has looked at that, we'll look at it together, and hopefully we'll bring this to a close here soon. Other than that, I would just say I apologize in advance. I'll be driving up to SFO on the eighth, and so for Red Eye, and you will be, I will be connecting via my phone in the car, so we'll see how that goes. So I'll try to not make it too, too painful for you. All right, thank you.
If I may, thank you for that, Commissioner Krieger. And it's my understanding, of course, you were on the side ordinance subcommittee and in capacity as the, the chair, so you, you know more about it than most of us do. You, you just mentioned that you'll be meeting with Alex on the second of next month?
Yes.
Is that a, a scheduled, a meeting? Is that just between the...
No, no, that's basically just as chairman of the committee, Alex has gone over it as the city attorney, made a few changes, meeting with the city manager just to make sure we're all three on the same page. Once we're, once we concur that everyone's happy with it, no more changes, then it's going to go to the city council and they'll get their chance to take a look at it.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. Moving on to Commissioner Wood.
George, thank you for a very successful garage sale. Great fun, it was nice to have it again. And as city manager, thank you for coming into our town. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, me too.
That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wood. Commissioner Rexdale Cronin?
Yeah, welcome aboard, city manager. I can't, Gert, Mr. Gert?
Gert.
Gert, I just want to make sure I say it right, because I'll mess it up and I'll never remember. I was, the only question I have is on the flag ordinance is, before we send it out, do you think it should go around to commissioners for a first, first look before we send it to city attorneys and all that? Just a question.
So to, to answer that again, I will, I'll submit the document to staff, and it'll be provided to us. That's at the city manager's pleasure if he, if he feels at that time that it need be vetted for legality, but it certainly will come to the planning commission. Ideally, I'd like to do this as efficiently as possible. I think we'd all agree to that. So if we can get it to us once for review and any necessary adjustments, and approve it and send it upstream to the city council, that would be ideal. And again, I have the greatest confidence in our city manager, Gerton, to, to help us navigate that as best possible. We will definitely see it with you and public outreach, most importantly, before it goes further.
Yeah, my only recommendation would be if you want more eyes on it before it's in a public meeting, I wouldn't send it to all of the commissioners. I'd have only three of you look at it and then get it to the city attorney, and then get it back to you all as a body in a public meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that guidance, Mr. City Manager. I had not considered that admittedly. Ideally, I'd like to have this by the eighth. And so I will be reaching out. I suppose I'll have to do so individually as to who would like to voluntarily be part of that three-person pre-review body. And perhaps that would be the best approach? Any ideas?
That's fine with me. I volunteer to do it, but if somebody, if something is wood or someone else has a burning desire, go for it.
Okay. It would be, it would be a bit unfair being that Commissioner Berger's not present tonight. I think we offered to the commission as a whole, so I will connect with each of you individually accordingly as, as is permissible. And we'll, and we'll get that formed up as per the city manager's recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Well, this is Car Week, and being a car guy like Mike is, we're probably all going crazy and enjoying the heck out of it. Way too busy, but I want to follow up on Denise's. Thank you for the garage sale. It was a roaring success. I think we actually did a record by a couple of extra garage sales, so I'm eager to pass along the donations to the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Committee to use appropriately for the citizens of our great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jack Shaw. Did you have a hand up, Vice Chair Hayward? No? Well, just now that we've gone through the rotation, I'll just leave it open. Any further comments from the commission? Mr. City Manager or staff?
Oh.
Looking forward to an open meeting.
Yes.
All right. Likewise. All right, with no further ado, then, we, our next meeting will, is scheduled for Wednesday, September 8th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. And we can adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Karen, for keeping up with us.
Good night, all.
You're welcome, thank you.
Night.
Night, everyone.
Happy Car Week.